Mr. Second. All right, we're live.
Thank you, Ross. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 27th Lamar County School Board regular scheduled meeting. This is a virtual meeting. It was been, it's been on the calendar that way all, all year. We, we usually have this meeting the second week in July or third week in July to approve some staff recommendations that have to come before us before school starts. We do have a couple of additional items on the board agenda today, as most of you know. And I would like to welcome everyone. I appreciate anyone who has logged in to listen to the meeting. I appreciate your support of the board and the continued prayers for the board and the school district as we go forward this school year. The first thing I'd like to do is just have a brief roll call, just so that we can note who is, who is present. Mr. Morris?
Present.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Mr. Braswell?
Present.
Mr. Norton?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Present.
And I'm Deborah Pierce, so I'm present as well. All right, we're gonna start this meeting as we do all of our other meetings. And I've asked Mr. Rick, Mr. Rick Norton, if he would, leave us in a word of prayer, please.
Bow your heads, please. Our heavenly Father, you've told us that where two or more of us gathered in your name that you were there, and we gather today in your name, and we know that you're in our midst. We honor you as our Creator. We know that you know what will happen next week and next year, but we don't know yet, Lord. But we ask for wisdom today for the board members, for the superintendents, for the staff in making decisions today, and we thank you for that wisdom, Lord. We give a thanksgiving for our healthcare professionals, for our doctors and our nurses that are helping in this COVID panic. We ask, Lord, for patience and understanding with parents and staff and students as we move forward during this pandemic. We ask most of all, Lord, for an end to the COVID pandemic. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We're all standing for the pledge, please. My pledge is lifted to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And here the public, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I forgot to call Mr. Chance's name. I apologize. I believe he's having a little issue getting in with work, so I don't think Jeremy is on. We just need to mark him as absent for right now. He's just gonna try and log in a little bit. Okay. Item number two is our meeting procedures, and this just basically means that if you have not already been approved to be on the board agenda, then you are not allowed to speak at this meeting. Excuse me. Item number three is approval of the general agenda. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Braswell.
Jim, do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thanks, Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number four is the approval of the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the annual budget.
Thank you, buddy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Braswell.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number five is consideration for change in reopening plan, and we have three items that we are gonna consider and we'll need to have a vote on each one. Item 5A, masks required for all students as part of dress code. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that masks are required for all students as part of the dress code.
Thank you, Terry.
Hey, this is Jeremy Yoll. I just made it, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you.
Where are, where are we?
5A.
Okay.
All right, we're asking for a second.
Second.
Is that Jim or Buddy?
What was the motion?
Sorry, it's a motion to require masks for all students as part of the dress code.
Okay. Thank you.
Terry, make the motion. I just need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. All right, item number 5B, masks required for all staff as part of dress code. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Jeremy.
All right, Jeremy, I give you the motion, and Jim, I give you the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number 5C, allow students who choose virtual option to participate in extracurricular activities. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Don't move, Jim.
All right, I'm gonna give Buddy the motion and Jim the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number six is the approval to update plan to reflect a shift from traditional to hybrid with a continued virtual op, option to be reevaluated on September the 4th. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Smith. She's gonna give us a little more information about this item before we discuss and vote.
I've had several people contact me over the weekend, so I put together some information in an effort to answer some of the questions that I've received. What is hybrid and how would it look for teachers and students? As many of you may know, hybrid is one of the three options that the State Department gave us for reopening schools. Some districts may allow different grade spans in buildings on alternating days. I would see alternating grades, all grades by groups of students either in Group A or Group B, and we would give consideration to family units. Why did we not do hybrid in the beginning? Excuse me. When our surveys were distributed and the original plan was drafted, our state numbers were less than half what they are at this point. Our hope was to get students back in the buildings because we all need that. It is their best, it is best for their education, and it would allow parents to fully return to work. So why change now? The Mississippi Department of Health presented new guidelines last week. Previous guidelines had indicated social distance could be reached in school buildings within three to six feet. It is now a full six feet. Also, the definition of close contact was changed to within six feet of someone for 15 minutes or more who tests positive. Masks were removed from that definition. By following this guidance, I'm gonna give you an example. If we were to follow this guidance and everyone is in a mask and a high school student tests positive, we would potentially have to send home 32 students for 14 days due to one positive test. That is eight students per class and potentially the teacher, given where the infected student, student is seated. Imagine being seated in a desk in a classroom. That would be the three students in front of you, the ones on each side of you, and the three behind you, essentially forming a square around the positive case. So all eight students, as well as the positive case, would need to go home for 14 full days. Adjusting our plan now and using the time to reevaluate at a later date allows us to begin educating our students, but at a safer setting for all. We would essentially have half those numbers in each class and allowing us to social distance so fewer would have to go home when a positive case appears. Under a traditional schedule, we are not able to practice social distancing on our school buses and only to a minimal degree in very few classes. If approved, the hybrid could be reevaluated at a later date using actual data from within our district. We have a number of high enrollment schools. There are 19 campuses that function in the Lamar County School District. We have one campus of 1,700, one of 1,450, one of 1,000, one that has 800, two that have 700, and seven who have more than 400. And these are with full classes. As of 7/24, 5,422 of our nearly seven, pardon me, of our nearly 10,700 students had registered for school this year, with 922 choosing online, 18%. So again, if we opened traditionally, even using these numbers, we would not have a class sized reduction to be able to social distance. We have a number of teachers who are at high risk or who go, go home to someone who is high risk. Students have a virtual option, teachers do not. In order to social distance using any schedule, working virtually for our teachers is not an option. But at least with hy, with hybrid, we could allow them the possibility of social distancing. I, of course, asked for principal input. As the school year started, it was evident that principals were preparing to come up with, by coming up with creative ways to get things done. One example, meet the teacher. They thought of car parades, anything that they could do to allow increased contact or at least visibility of our teachers with our students. We voted related to hybrid, and all 19 principals agreed to move to hybrid. As discussion continues, some of our principals created a list of pros and cons. I'll list the pros first. They felt that we could properly social distance within every classroom. They felt the soft opening would allow them to work out for kinks, work out any kinks, meaning have the students in a building at a time. It would make car line, buses, cafeteria, arrival and dismissal much more manageable. Would give them the ability to remediate better with fewer students each day. Ability to have traditional and virtual at the same time, pardon me, hybrid and virtual at the same time, parents that don't want to send a child traditionally but don't have the internet access, they could have the best of both worlds by allowing the hybrid and/or virtual. Relationship building, smaller groups of children at one time, less crowding with lower anxiety for students and teachers. Increase in teacher morale because they would feel safer. Contact tracing would be easier for students. We might get some students who have initially chosen virtual that would choose hybrid instead. Fewer kids on a school bus. Principals could utilize activity teachers to cover classes where we cannot find a sub or do not have a teacher. Since teachers were going to have to teach virtually anyway to virtual students, this gives them more time to collaborate and prepare. Staff in high-risk categories could feel safer at work. The cons. We do understand that it's difficult for parents to find alternating days for childcare. Principals would eliminate activity classes so that those teachers could be used to support ELA, math, and science, and as well as cover classes where we do not have adults in the room. Reduction in the amount of time a teacher would get to spend with a child. Kids need lunch and breakfast, would only have in-person access with a limited number of days a week, though we are coming up with an alternate plan like a feeding, grab-and-go feeding program to offset that. We did poll our special services teachers because of the students that they serve to make sure that we had a grasp on their feelings. As of Sunday morning, 46 supported traditional, one chose not to respond, and 64 fell in support of hybrid. Again, if you all would support hybrid, it would be reevaluated after Labor Day with solid data. There are a few other things I feel I need, need to address related to our overall situation based on the questions I received over the weekend. Devices. The board did support one-to-one for devices, which means students could have devices that they could take home and use personally. The district office has received a number of calls about the federal dollars that we have received. We have not received the money that was allocated yet for devices. The Mississippi Department of Education is finalizing the grant process that we will have to complete. Even though it is a grant process, we have been assured that as long as we complete the paperwork, we will receive the money or, and/or the devices when it's released. Once we receive the devices, it will streamline the AB process and allow us to go paperless for students and staff. Students would then be able to work using their devices at home and upload and download material when they return to school. Other funding. We have received other funding. It was the smallest portion we've received so far. It's been released to us, and that is the money that we can use to aid in our sanitation process, such as hand sanitizer for buses, classrooms, and hallways, spray cleaners and cloths for employees, hiring day porters to aid in daily cleaning and management since we will need to eat in the classrooms, as well as hiring individuals to assist the nurse as they may, will possibly need additional assistance. We do, regardless of the decisions made today, we will update the plan to include some changes that you all have already voted on. I did have a number of parent concerns. I had, that contacted me directly. There was an issue, I think some replied to a different email address. So again, these numbers are the ones that I received personally to my email. I had 51 that were not in support, 14 that were. Of those who contacted me and were not in support, several of them mentioned these same concerns and issues. So I'm gonna read all that were mentioned when I was contacted. Childcare, the expense of it, need for people to work, that they would be around more students when having to go back and forth from school to childcare. Many people indicated they were an essential worker, as we are and our teachers are. Not enough contact with a teacher. Would be harder for certain classes, such as our CTE classes. They already lost enough contact with teachers since the spring. They voted for traditional, so why change? Varying guidance? What are we following? Need to temperature check students. Just open and see what happens. What about our 504 students? We're using children as palms. Look to daycares. They've had no issues and made no changes. Our special needs students. Kids having free time and gathering during those days when not in school. Social emotional concerns. There have been no, no child deaths, just reopen school. Food stability. Flu kills more. Devices, internet. Parents in support felt that it would give children and staff a safer option. Everyone has been social distancing. It will spread when school reopened. Yes, but have the attendance stays back-to-back? Yes, and delay is a must. So again, opinions are all over the, all over the place, as well as from our staff. All staff who's contacted me were in support, except for one staff member and one spouse of a staff member. They are, like I am, they're very concerned about the contact, about being able to social distance. And some, some feel uncomfortable reopening with any decision we make, that they need to be afforded the same precautions as others are. I do understand that you all have been contacted a lot over the weekend, as I have. I know that many of you are struggling with your decision. I also know that you are a very prayerful board, and I'm thankful for that. I need you to know that if you believe you cannot fully support the hybrid at this time, I understand and trust in your decision. If you do not support the hybrid, what I would ask is that I be allowed to use it as a backup plan if we were to begin to have outbreaks in schools or communities. If the date, delay is approved, we could use that time to create the AB student groups, open traditionally, and then move to hybrid later if our numbers warranted it. Again, that would be if it were a Plan B. As always, I'll work with whatever the board decides. I only wanted to make you aware of the potential issues and offer an alternate plan. There are several other things within the plan that I would like some freedom to change. Like I was instructed to use consistent language, and this is by the State Health Department. So some things I've already changed are the word mask to face covering. I would like to edit the meet the teacher section to cover the ideas that the principals created. And an option for senior privilege related to early release or late start based on their required classes only. And again, I'd like the freedom to be able to change these things as they do not change the integrity of the plan. They're just fine tuning and giving more information to, to all parents, staff. Again, I need to remind everyone that this plan, plan is fluid, and it will remain so throughout the school year, I would imagine. The governor or the state health could mandate changes at any time, and at that point, I would simply notify the board and the public. So again, I'm just trying to make the, the public aware of where we are at this point. And again, if you are not in support of hybrid, I would like for it to be a Plan B, because again, given the guidance, I just need to know what options I have available and what you all deem best going forward from this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, board, I will open it up for a motion in a second, and if we need discussion, the person makes the second, please add that to your second. Okay, so we didn't have a vote on that, that item, so I will open the floor for an additional motion. If we're, if we're gonna change this, if we're not gonna vote for hybrid, then I need a motion to give direction to Tess as to what direction we need her to go in.
Well, if there's no motion, that motion, that, that one, I think it says, it says it's the way school lives.
Correct. It would be traditional, but I wanted, wanted to see if you, I wanted the hybrid option as our official Plan B if we were to deal with outbreaks.
So I'll make a motion that we continue the traditional school opening, but to allow the superintendent to continue her process with the hybrid so that it would be a backup Plan B in case we have serious outbreaks, that we have another way to continue.
Okay.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
Okay, so Buddy, do you wanna amend that to say that we're still gonna offer the, the virtual option?
Yes.
Also, traditional and virtual?
Well, I think, well, no, that's a, that's, that's a specific school on down in the agenda, right?
No, it's part of this.
Well, that, that's part of the original plan.
Yeah, the original.
Is that part of it?
It's on virtual.
Then we, we need that in the motion, then.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's amended.
We can add that.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second with, with discussion. That was Jeremy, sorry. So the motion is to approve to, to keep the, to start the school year in the traditional plan as we originally voted two weeks ago with a virtual option.
On what date?
Well, that's gonna be our next item.
Well, that's the next item.
Yeah, that's the next item.
Okay, good. Yes, okay, good.
Okay, and then.
Good, good point.
And then, but have hybrid as a Plan B and have Tess and her, her staff continue to fine tune the hybrid plan, knowing that that may be a possibility that we have to go to in the future. Does, does everybody agree with that motion? Just wanna make sure everybody understands.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I oppose, Terry.
Okay, so it's four one. So that item passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number seven, and I'm gonna reword this because since we voted to keep traditional with, and virtual to be reevaluated after Labor Day with hybrid as a Plan B, I'm gonna make this approval to delay the start of school by one week. Okay? That's the change in that item. So by one week, and that would make it from, I guess it's 17th.
I've got a calendar today.
Tess will give us a calendar, but instead of the 10th for staff and 17th for students, it's just gonna be by one week.
And we would still have the staggered start.
All right, so what, what is the start date so we can get that right in our motion? Anybody got a calendar?
I believe school would start on faculty and staff with a report on August 10th, and then the 17th is when students would report.
Now, I think the delay moves it to the 17th and the 24th, I believe.
No, no.
I know, that's not accurate. Um, and we do have a.
My bad, please.
Staff. I'm sorry, y'all. We do have a flex day for staff. If you say one week, I'll promise I'll get a calendar out today, but everything would move back by one week, where the teachers were originally gonna have a flex day on the 31st. They would have that on the 7th. Then they would report to work on, pardon me, the 10th, and we would do our staggered start with students on the 13th and 14th, with everyone, all students beginning on the 17th. But if you approve that for a delay of one week, I'll get those dates out and the calendar updated for everyone today.
Okay, I think that's as printed, I believe.
Well, it's, both different, the, the staff would still be on the 10th, but the students would stagger start on August 6th and August 7th as originally planned in our calendar, basically. Okay, so 13th and 14th would be the staggered start, and 17th would be everyone. So, yes.
Oh, my goodness, I approve the delay.
I make a motion that we delay.
Okay.
One week, okay.
One week.
No, that was Terry.
I, I, I second that motion.
That's Jeremy. Thank you, Jeremy. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, any opposed? And that passes. All right, item number eight is the approval of the COVID-19 attendance policy. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the COVID-19 attendance policy.
Thank you, Buddy.
I second.
Thank you, Jeremy. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Item number nine, excuse me, item number nine is the approval to require additional attendance at JTEC. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Jeremy. Don't move, Jeremy.
All right, do I have a second for discussion?
Second for discussion, Jim.
Second for discussion, Terry.
Thank you, Terry and Jim. All right. This item would allow Jefferson Todd Educational Center here to only do traditional. We are passing something to, we are pa, what we just passed is giving us the option for the students to be either traditional or virtual.
For their days to count at alternative.
Right, so I feel we don't, I mean, we need to make sure everybody in the district has the same opportunity to go either traditional or virtual. That's, that's my opinion. So.
I understand.
I, I, yeah, that makes sense.
All right, Jer.
I agree to.
Jeremy, do you wanna amend your, your motion? Not approve, or we?
Yes, we need, yes, I do want to amend my motion.
Okay, so we're gonna amend that.
I wanna, I want to have them, yes, I want to have those students have the exact same option as everyone else and every other student in the district.
Thank you, that's, that's what I thought, okay. So Jeremy and Jim, you second?
I second the amended motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. All right, moving on to item number 10. Approval to reject all bids on removal of modular, modular units at Oak Grove Middle School and Lamar County Career Tech Center and advertise again in the future.
Make a motion to reject all bids on removal of the modular units.
Thank you, Buddy. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Thank you, Jeremy. What's discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna, we're rejecting this because the bids were way, way too low, correct? I just wanted that to go on the record.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I had.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, and that passes. Item number 11 is the approval to rescind policy BDE, review of board policy. Do I have a motion?
Make a, make a motion to rescind this policy, BDE. Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Second for discussion, yeah.
Second for discussion, go ahead, Jim.
If, if we were to, to remove this, we would have no published method of, this is reviewing board policy, of reviewing board policy. It, our, our procedure doesn't require us to do any portion anytime. We could review all board policies at one meeting if we chose to. I, I think we're trying to do this to leave some pressure. I, I think we're trying to do this to leave some pressure.
Weeks. Weeks, yeah. I, I think what, and Jim, you can keep going, but I believe if, if I'm correct on this is this is only for a time period of this, while we're in the pandemic. It allows, because, I mean, Tess is the one that kind of leads us on the review of the policies. She's got enough on her plate right now to worry about that reviewing a policy that really just is not going to have any changes, but it's, we just need to review it because it's time for it to be reviewed. I believe we can extend her that amount of time until after the pandemic is over and take, rescind this policy.
Aren't we, aren't.
Moratorium.
Aren't we talking about stuff that's, you know, has something to do only with the COVID-19 pandemic?
No.
Well, I mean, it would be, yeah, it is.
Is, is it going to be all policy?
Yeah. That's the motion.
And it's.
Uh, what about if we, if we rescind it for six months? Would that give us enough time and then try to catch up after the six months?
Yes, I do believe we need to put a moratorium on it. We do not need to say this is forever rescinded. That's, that's not our intent, my intent anyway. And I don't believe it's.
Well, that'll take an amendment, that'll take an amendment of the motion then.
Correct, correct. And where we put a date on it, Rick, might want to get your buy-in on this. Do we need to put a date on it or do we need to just say till the end of the pandemic? Or do we, I mean, what, what would be your suggestion?
Well, either one would work ever because at this point, the board has declared this to be an emergency, so, because of the pandemic. So whenever the board votes that the pandemic is over, that could, that could be a deadline. Uh, and that would be a flexible date rather than a, a literal three months or six months. So that, that would be my suggestion is that when the pandemic emergency is, is over as declared by this board, then this policy revision would, would be over.
Right, and I appreciate Rick's guidance there, but personally, I would like to see us set a hard and fast date to revisit it. And then we can extend it or not at that time. That way, it's not just floating around for us to possibly forget or whatever.
So we want to.
And that's not a problem, but that's just.
Yeah, I think so.
That's just my two cents.
I make a motion that we revisit, uh, that we do approve this, um, that I amend my motion to add that we revisit this at our first meeting in January of 2021.
Okay.
Yeah, I second that.
You support that second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none and that passes. Okay, item number twelve is very similar. It's the approval to rescind policy B D C, board policy adoption. And I believe this is the one that has the thirty-day requirement, that it has to sit for thirty days.
Right, and once you vote on it, it would be inactive policy.
Right, so, um, what, what we're trying to do here is give, give Tess and the board a little more flexibility to put, put policies in motion in practice without it having to sit for thirty days. And again, I think we add to that, we would revisit it on a, at our first meeting in January. All in favor of the motion in a second.
My concern again, my concern again is.
We need a second for discussion.
Yeah.
Second for discussion, Jim.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Okay, now discussion, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, this is for all board policy adoption. If we rescinded this for any time, we would have no way to adopt any kind of policy.
Now, this is, this is just to take away the thirty-day requirement that a policy has to sit in order.
That's not what we need.
I would still introduce policy to you all at meetings and you all would vote to have that policy, um, be board policy, but it would just have to take immediately rather than have to wait thirty days to secondary.
Uh, according to the board policy adoption procedure, sorry, I didn't mean to erupt. According to the board policy adoption procedure, the third paragraph says, um, adoption of policy shall be in official meetings of the Lamar County School District Board of Education and shall be no less than thirty days after submission. That's our problem. I think we ought to rescind and shall be no less than thirty days after submission in that third paragraph, which would still give us a way to adopt policy, but we would not be saddled by that thirty-day after submission portion.
So, Mr. Bradwell, what if I amended, what if I, and, and Tess can weigh in on this too. What if I amended my motion to say that when we put a policy before us, because we're still going to get to vote on every one of these policies, it's just not, they're just not wanting to have to sit thirty days, they're wanting to enact, enact some of them immediately. So what if I amended my motion to say that if we, if we vote on a policy, the, the night it's put before us or the day it's put before us to vote, that is, it is designated one that can sit for thirty days or designated one that needs to be enacted right then? What, what if we did something like that? What do you think about that, Tess?
That sounds good.
Rick, for that.
Would that satisfy you, Mr. Bradwell?
Yes, yes, that would, that would relieve Tess of the thirty days if there's a crisis and our normal ones then we could do normally.
That's right.
I think that would be wise.
That may would give us the ability to move, I mean, this may be something that we don't have to change moving forward, you know? Maybe something that we can do all the time if there is an emergency or something that needs to happen right away.
Okay. Does everybody understand the revisions of Jeremy's motion? Okay, so I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. All right, item number thirteen is sixteen section land manager matters and Mr. Harless, turn it over to you.
All right. First item I have is to cancel lease number six twenty-four to West Oaks LLC.
Do I have a motion?
Move, Terry.
Second.
We'll give Jim and Terry second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
The next item is to approve a new twenty-five-year commercial lease to West Oaks LLC.
Make a motion to approve the new.
Thank you, Buddy. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
Next item is to cancel lease number seven sixty-eight to Miss Allison Novak.
Do I have a motion?
Move, Jim.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Jim. Buddy, I'll give you the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
The next item is to approve a new twenty-five-year commercial lease to Ward Size Food of Purvis.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the new twenty-five-year lease for Ward's Purvis.
Thank you, Buddy. Do I have a second?
Second, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
The next item is to approve a lease assignment for Mr. Kyle Cook to Lori Jones.
Do I have a motion?
Move, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second?
Second, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
Next item is to cancel lease number four eighty-three to Lamar Reynolds.
All right, do I have a motion?
Move, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. All, do I have a second?
Terry, but. Second, Terry, but I have a question. Kevin, where is this located?
In Purvis.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Jim and Terry. Any opposed? And that passes.
Next item is to approve a new forty-year lease to Freedom Enterprises LLC.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Buddy. Do I have a second?
Jim, second.
Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
The next item is to approve another new lease, a forty-year lease to Freedom Enterprises LLC.
Do I have a motion?
Move, move, Jim.
Thank you, Buddy. Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes.
Next item is to approve to advertise and accept bids for a hunting lease in Section sixteen, one south, fourteen west.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Buddy. Do I have a second?
Second, Jim.
Thank you, Terry.
Terry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Last item I have is to approve to advertise and accept bids for a hunting lease in Section sixteen, three north, sixteen west.
Motion to approve to advertise and accept bids.
Thank you, Buddy. Do I have a second?
Second, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Hands them a turn.
Thank you.
All right, item number fourteen is the consent agenda. Mr. Morris, any questions?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Ingram?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bradwell?
Yes, ma'am.
You do have a question?
Uh, item, I do have a question. Yes.
Sure.
Item six E, um, I don't believe we can ask our lawyer complies with our PERS regulation chapter thirty-four, section one oh six. Uh, I think we should consider pulling that.
It, it has been pulled.
Okay, thank you. That was my concern.
Thank you. All right, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Buddy. Do I have a second?
Terry.
Second, Jim.
Thank you, Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. I'm sorry, it's, uh, Buddy made the motion, Terry made a second, that's fine. All right, we're going to go to item number fifteen. We have no other business, so item number sixteen is to recess. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to recess, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Do I have a second?
Second, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it. Y'all have a good day.